To bid and she'll give some extension. We perhaps we decided before that we have to do a special meeting if they want to give us an extension pass next month. Or we can have a special meeting anyway if he's willing to do it and the prices, we agree on the price and we have him go ahead and do it. That's a special meeting to look at the bid.
Okay, you have two questions before your council. They'll propose that to go ahead and just hire Joe to do the work.
We'll have to get a bid for it.
Bid.
Get a bid. And then perhaps we will have a special meeting to okay if it can't, works into his time schedule to go ahead and do it. We have a special meeting. See if we can get it done. That's my motion.
Put it away.
Everybody understand the motion.
Dale, we do have to have a special meeting.
We have one or two special meetings.
Can you give that one?
Sure.
And see what's. But I think it's all right.
Oh, I'll bet it's right.
I'll do it. Takes me to second.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's nice.
That's a good one.
My, we had a motion first.
I just prefer.
All in favor?
Aye.
You mad at me for disagreeing?
I can't multitask.
For afternoons, he says I could get fed up with Chinese restaurant.
I always watch that you're talking about on Friday afternoon. If I see it, I almost retire.
Yep, I go have lunch there.
Oh, yeah, the skid loader, I did talk to Stuart about that. He didn't have any problem with the skid loader or the army in that way. So he said that was fine the way it was.
I've got small business with the, do you need him to send us a letter stating that?
Yes, I can.
He, I want to make sure we're covered, not just hearsay.
Yep.
Okay, new business?
I have some old business yet, Jim.
Sorry?
Um, Terry Brown, I talked to Terry Brown. Uh, he would go ahead and take payment rather than skid steer time. His fee would be five hundred dollars. Uh, I think we still have eight hours of skid steer time left. And he said when he did, he had a brand equipment, jackhammer, saw to cut the street. So it was, you know, pretty involved thing. That's why the price would be five hundred dollars. Or he could still do skid steer, whatever the council decides. This, this charge would be five hundred dollars if he wanted to buy back that skid steer time.
Well, I think if we, if we, uh, buy back the time, then we violated our own, uh, that we passed last month and did not lease it out anymore.
Oh, you mean if we don't buy?
Yeah, if we don't buy it, we're, I mean, if we do buy it, if we don't buy it.
Yeah.
Okay, we're violating our own rule.
That's fine, that's, that's his, that's his price, is five hundred dollars.
Does he have any receipts though showing that he rented this stuff?
It was two or three years ago, I, I don't know.
Yeah.
But he, he said as a contractor, if we had a contractor do that, it cost a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's what he said it cost.
Okay. Do you get a motion to go ahead and pay Mr. Brown for his time for the skid loader?
I make motion to be paid.
I second.
Aye.
Aye.
She doesn't smile much, she must be getting it done.
Also, on the door locks and the cameras, we've got two cameras up. We replaced the door lock on the meeting room and on the shelter house. And the lock in there, the one we got was not, the door is two and a quarter inch thick, but not long enough. So Mitch ordered another one, I think we got that, so we'll get that put up hopefully sometime this week. Uh, the old locks are here and some camera paperwork is there. I gave Jim the keys, there's two keys for each lock here. Jim's got those and he's got the paperwork with the master codes and everybody's code that was put in for the door. So he can put that in the safe wherever he needs to go. Now, the one for the shelter house, and I don't know what the council's spending it, but Jackie in the past has given people the code to get in when they have a function. I think maybe a key would be better, one of those two keys, get a key instead of a code. So once they're done, they don't have a code, they can't get back in there. Nice to change the code every time.
Yeah.
Pardon?
Could they also do the key?
They could, I, I don't know that anybody would do that.
Yeah, well, it's, it's worked for years, there's a key over that door.
Yeah, yeah, but they'll both work, a key will work or a code will work. So right now, you've got a code, Jim, and Jackie's got a code. That's the only people that have a code to the, to the shelter house. So I don't know, and I guess if that comes up, Jackie can get the key or whatever, however it works out.
Okay.
So that's the option, the camera.
I, uh, no. I didn't quite understand what you were saying. Now, you, you saying that you, uh, think we need to go just back to a key on the shelter house? I do agree with that.
Well, Jackie takes reservations for the shelter house and she would be letting the people in or giving them the key to get in. And then.
It's got a code and a key.
It's got two.
It's got a code and a key.
Yeah. The code and the key.
You can either unlock it with the key or you can unlock it with the code.
So what's the question?
So she would have to either give the guest that was renting it either the key, give them the key to so they could get in. I think would be the option I wish, but that's just me.
That sounds like a bigger option than letting us, the code would be out there.
Right, that's kind of what I think.
I mean, I just think it's less likely somebody's gonna make a copy of the key than remember code.
Yeah, exactly.
So that's, that's just my thought. And that can be discussed another time. Jackie could come up and let them in as far as that goes till we decide what we're gonna do there.
Yeah, so far no reservations yet.
Spring's not far away.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be coming up.
It's all my old business.
New business?
Oh, does it?
What?
The meter reading.
Reader, reader, yeah, we have a letter here. Mr. Joe Uplis. And I'll read this to you if I can see it. Can you hear me? Says, Mr. Foster, I hope this letter finds you well. My name is Joe Uplis, owner and operator of Uplis Home Improvement LLC in Hiawatha, Kansas. I'm writing this letter to express my interest in being considered for the duty of reading meters, water meters for the city of Powhatan beginning this upcoming April of 2025. I find this opportunity one to be capitalized upon for serving the community as well as serving and honoring the Lord Glorious 323. Thank you for your time and consideration, I look forward to hearing from you, Mr. Joe Uplis. So we need a, a meter meter. Here we have a letter from a young man that's interested in that, doing that job. You have any questions or comments?
Are you familiar with what is involved?
No. I was told there would be some training, but that's, I know, but other than that, I know, or I heard it's like a monthly thing within a certain window.
Yeah, uh, I think also if, if somebody doesn't pay their water bill, you would have to turn it off and put a lock on it.
Okay.
Uh, if a meter needs to be changed, that also, how often that happens, not very often, but I think that's also part of the deal.
Okay.
And then reading the meters.
Pull the meter out of the pump house and put it back in.
Is that right? Can they do that every, every fall?
Every fall and spring.
Yeah, every fall and spring.
I think Roland has that one.
Yeah, Roland takes care of that usually, doesn't he?
Uh, Joe is taking care of it.
Joe, only Roland has it right now.
So what?
That, that sounds like something we can, we can prepare.
Training will be involved.
Get somebody to show you where all the meters are at.
I can do that, she's already got it lighted up. I already got mine up.
Cause he has a pump to pump out the water.
Yes.
What about the pump?
Uh, pump is in there.
It's in there.
Well, it's in there, exactly. Sometimes some of the pits have water, you can't raise you the water, you just gotta pump it out.
Any more questions, comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept Mr. Uplis's offer.
I make motion to accept his offer.
I'm crazy.
What did you do?
Tracy's second.
Tracy's second. I'm second.
All in favor?
All right.
Well, I bruised, I, you touched me and I bruised. After we had that car accident, when I had my lung attack, we were getting back on the interstate and I was all the way in the back.
Okay, I have a letter here from Mr. Pollock. And he says, I, uh, what record document would you like to obtain? It says audio recordings of city council meetings recorded by the governing body of Powhatan after January 6, 2024. What is the intended use of the doc, recorded documents? Personal research. I certify that I do not intend and will not use any of the names or addresses contained or derived from the records for the purpose of selling or offering for sale of any property or services to any person listed to any person who resides at any address listed. Neither will sell, give, or otherwise make available to any persons any list or names or addresses contained or derived from the records or information for the purpose of allowing that person to sell or offer any sale of any property or services to any person listed or to any person who resides at any address listed. This presented to me, I guess he, he wants the recordings I made for the meetings. Let me see that. But I previously had informed Mr. Pollock that after I talked to my attorney, he informed me that I take, make these recordings for personal use and therefore they do not fall under the K O M A rule. And besides, Mr. Pollock has a recording for the meetings. So I don't know what his purpose was in. Okay, do we have any other business?
Tracy.
Oh, yes, Mr. Tracy.
Yes, sir.
Your, uh, meeting with Mr. Cohen.
Oh, yeah. I did talk to him, uh, and he said he would help me learn, uh, all the stuff out there, huh?
Is that, that, that may be what Bill Shayer currently does?
Yeah. Yeah. So, yeah, uh, Roland said he would help me learn all that stuff out there. And, uh, yeah.
So you need to make time for the school and I think you probably have, uh, Luke could probably explain that, what's required. Does he have to go down to the Pika to take training?
There's courses throughout the state. He just has to find a course he wants to attend. It'll be multiple hours, more than one class.
Something like one day or half a day at a time, or it used to be anyway, is that?
Usually the most you can get is five hours credit in a given day. It's similar to what it was when you were doing it, Dale.
Can you just have to go online and then just go down and take the test?
I don't believe so. There was a little bit that they offered online during COVID, but I think most of it, last time I checked, most of that had gone away. I, unfortunately, I think that would be beneficial, but I don't think they currently offer it, but hopefully that's, you know, it'd be nice if it was online.
So keep in mind that you said you did, uh, say that they would pay for the training you have to take.
And thank you.
Great, you're welcome.
Do thank you very much. Yes. I'll entertain a motion to, to accept Tracy's offer.
I'm actually a good operator with proper training. Tracy's offered to be the wastewater operator for the city.
I second.
Do I have to stay?
Yes.
So I don't?
I am.
Okay, I'll, hey. Hi. Shirley?
Yes, I can tap my hand, I call it gold, Shirley.
Hey, a little heavy, see, I can count that fast.
And mom has some information on the grant.
Okay.
This was pertaining to Ruth, Ruth and Roger Wolf's charitable trust. On behalf of the trust, we are pleased to report that charitable grants have been approved, total one hundred thirty-three thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-five cents for the year of twenty-four. To specify charitable institutions including forty-three thousand, forty-three hundred, seven hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-eight cents in grants to the charitable organization in Grant and Donovan Counties in Kansas. Although not all grant applications can be approved for funding or all application to be fully funded. Grant to your institution has been approved in the amount of a thousand dollars. Accordingly, attractively designing the matter, the amount is enclosed in this letter. Beneficiary selection committee would appreciate your reporting back to the trustee in writing on how the funds have been utilized in completing the project outline and the grant application. Also, of course, as a receipt, which we would appreciate your signing and returning in the employee's mail. On behalf of the trust, we appreciate your taking the time, making a special effort to submit a grant application. More importantly, the beneficiary selection committee of the charitable trust appreciates the contributions you are making to your community and looks forward to you submitting future grant applications for worthwhile projects for your organization that we wish to pursue. The satisfaction through completion of the project outline and the application will be taken in consideration and considered with future grants. Congratulations on the approval of your grant application. Eric Metz and Senior Trust Officer, Citizens Bank. He's a trustee from Ruth, Ruth and Roger Wolf's charitable trust. And the check was a thousand, we requested twenty-five hundred. And that was just for the tree stunts to be removed.
Appreciate what we can get.
Yes. We can handle that.
Okay, I've got one thing, and then maybe let the Legion and somebody. When we did the water in the basement, we did not hook up water to the bathroom or the kitchen. So I took it on myself and I bought the parts and I put it on and now we've got water back here. Water heater works, I shut it back off, so there's no hot water, I can turn it on and keep it up. But the, the supplies, total supplies is fifty-nine, uh, fifty-sixty dollars and twenty-nine cents. And if the council don't approve that, then I'll just put that in there myself. So fifty, sixty dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Well, I motion that we approve that.
I have a second.
Aye.
Hey, you want to give that motion, you manage, motion carry.
So that's all three?
Yes.
Okay, who motioned?
I guess that. Can I just pick somebody over there?
And would you like to give this to Vicky, please? Am I supposed to give this to Shelly?
Yes, that was like my, like in Hiawatha.
This just goes back to the, um, the bank.
Tracy?
Yes, sir. Uh, yeah, we got a fever out there at the lagoon.
Yeah?
Yes.
Did you, did you catch it, did you see it?
Not yet, uh, yeah, the other day I was cutting down. Well, you remember I told you that it looked like somebody took a hatchet?
Ah.
Yeah, turned out it was.
Oh, darn.
Uh, he's starting to make a habitat in the northeast corner of the northeast cell. And he's chewing up some of the trees on the other side of the berm from there.
Okay.
That's a positive, I guess.
Well, yeah.
Could you tell what kind he was, cause some of them were protective?
Uh, no, I couldn't, I just seen his head go underwater.
Like, I was a protective, like a lot of life people or whatever, because I know some sneaks out protected.
If he's causing damage, I think they can either have him trapped or shoot the thing up. He used to shoot musk rats and they said he couldn't do it, but I contacted, uh, that was game board or somebody, steak. They said, you know, if they're causing damage, you can get rid of it.
Okay.
Whatever it takes, I mean.
Yeah.
I can't move my finger right now. I can think about it.
She wants a certain.
It's the same name.
Well, I'd like to say something first before we go on. I think that council owes a, not only the council, but the city as a whole, really has to extend to Barry and Dale a great hand of appreciation for all the show work that they've done.
Yeah, trees.
I appreciated it. I really.
You still do, but I don't know anymore.
He and Barry is always doing something, you know, that Dale many times, and, and that's so appreciated. He's not making, you know, to, for somebody to say, well, this needs to be done, he sees it needs to be done and he goes ahead and does it.
For the guys cutting the trees and pouring down and doing all that to us, I need a really, yeah, appreciation for that. There's some of them sitting over there.
Yeah.
So I was reading through some old minutes and I see where the council used to pay the volunteers that know, they, they see paid for gas for their mores.
And did they when you were doing it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we should possibly do that again.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion to that affair?
I do.
Should I get?
I'm saying, aye.
So, so what, what do we do, how are we gonna do that?
Well, do you have the gas card?
I've got the gas card.
And just receipts, doesn't it?
Yeah, I have two seats.
So that's giving different, yeah.
So we just get a gas can and have it someplace, I don't know where you put it, somebody, little car.
Or just fill your homes up on, like a plumber, you can't do it that way, you can't.
I mean, I, I don't know why you couldn't, uh, just get a, fill a gas tank up at home and, uh,
And have the receipt for it?
Yeah.
Oh, determine receipt?
You have to fill, you know.
Too easy.
Yeah. Can or? You could have that at home and. Okay, everybody vote for that.
And I will need receipts, I can't take people's work for it. Oh, sure.
You do have to make receipts.
Yes.
Okay, we will, uh, entertain the comments from the guests today.
Mr. Ray. I'd like, uh, I can defer to Robert Hall, our finance officer, we have an agreement we would like to present to the council. We, we've been talking, well, first Dale and I went up Friday and picked up the city file to start doing the repairs in Legion Hall. And we're gonna, we're gonna, the plan is we're gonna start replacing those on Friday. Well, we need, we promised you a whole harmless agreement, and I've got a copy of it here that, uh, our attorney wrote up, sent to your attorney in November and got no comment back, so I'm assuming that silence is approval. So I got two originals here. It requires Dwayne's signature as the commander, Jim's signature as the, uh, mayor, and then Vicky's signature as a, as a.
Attested.
Witness to the signature. And then you, you can have a original copy and we'll keep an original copy, if that's suitable. Might bring this up to you here.
Sure, please. Want to read it? Mr. Ray, you wanna read it? Vicky, you wanna read it?
No.
I'm going to run it, you won't understand anyway.
The undersigned Winger American Legion Post 373 Powhatan, Kansas. Hereby acknowledges gratuitous occupation of these certain properties, specifically the premises and structure located at 106 North Central, the North Commercial of Powhatan, Grand County, Kansas, owned and operated by the city of Powhatan, Kansas for the purpose of repairing and renovation said structure in consideration of being permitted such use, the undersigned execution attached release and covenant not to sue on behalf of all of its members and any and all persons doing work on the premises, structure at the behest of the direction of Winger Post 373. The undersized, the undersigned covenanture for and on behalf of said covenanture, all members of said Winger Post 373, any persons doing work on the premises, structure at the behest or direction of Winger Post 373, legal representatives, heirs and sons hereby release, wage and discharge of said covenant T and all representative persons associated in connection by all ability to said covenanture, all members of said Winger Post 373, any persons doing work on the premises at the behest of the direction of Winger Post 373. I already read that. Any claim of damage resulting thereof, unaccounted injury to said covenanture's personal property, even injury resulting in death, whatever caused by negligence of covenant T or otherwise. While said covenanture is using the facilities of covenant, covenant T. Covenant to our, for covenants not to sue covenant T, but respect to that aforementioned activities, usage or claims arising thereof. Well, that's happened, but if you want to hear the rest, I'll read it, but I don't know what.
That's, that's why attorneys get paid it as much as they do. They can fill the whole page with almost nothing, like.
So you got to sign one of them, don't you do?
No, you, no, you can do it, I can.
Dwayne has to, and then you have to. A lot of words on there.
Dale, I think we could have put that in one paragraph.
I know, no kidding.
One sentence, probably.
There, there are two pages, Jim. There are two originals.
We listen.
Not anymore, you said.
God, you said some of your rights. I was in town, and I was walking.
Too many stairs are getting hand crapped now. Good to see all the guests here tonight. Getting heated. Yeah, you have something to say, dude?
Oh, right. Always a can. Is it good? Wow. I know.
The Walmart was amazing.
Really? Well, that was here, right?
Mayor, I guess go ahead and take this, if you wanna copy then, so we'll have it.
Bring my clipboard back, man.
Okay.
We're gonna start off on a Friday morning here with the volunteers, the Legion Post members, and we spent working on putting some titles in.
Well, great. Praise the Lord for that. We finally got around to that. All right, do you, anybody over there have any other comments?
Oh, I just wanted to give you a heads up. Uh, I ran across the Kansas Commerce site. They had a towns grant, which is brand new. Pawhatan qualified because you have not received any co, uh, funding from the state of Kansas in the last five years. So I quickly threw together a grant. It's ten thousand dollars, had, uh, Shirley and Vicky and Jill selling write letters of support. Co-op guys all signed off on it, saying they'd help us. Uh, it's a place making improvement grant. So I requested paint, to paint the propane tanks and the swings and the card house, get some trash cans in front of the post office and the shelter house, upgrade the grill area. The if, the reasons we requested this was from that survey a year ago that we passed out to people. And so I just tallied that and sent that off as well. And redo the horseshoe pits. So that starts, well, no mid-April if we get the grant, and then we'd like to try to get it done by Memorial Day weekend, so when alumni comes through, they'll see everything painted up and nice. Probably do the horseshoe pits after that lull in August, before Memorial Day weekend, when the farmers can help dig up the ground and stuff. But I just wondered if you did not mind, or if you could make a decision between now and the April meeting about some of the metal? Can we cut some of those things off, like the flag pole? That we don't hang a flag pole on. There's some metal, and there's three horseshoe pits, but we are only gonna redo two, so you've got two stakes that are just sticking out in the ground. So there's some metal things that I think could be cut off, and I don't know about the volleyball court. If you want that redone, or if you want, just survey around and see if there's some metal posts. Do you see what I'm saying?
So you, for safety purposes?
Well, do, just for beauty, or just to, if we're gonna repaint and do things, do you wanna just kind of, like there's a, there used to be a sign by that bush and it's just two metal things sticking out, like, and, so somebody's got a porch or something, they could just saw them off. And, but I didn't wanna do that without permission, so if you guys, by the next April meeting, decide what you didn't mind sawing off. I don't think the flag pole is salvageable. It's too rusted out to hold a flag.
So what, what's, where is that at? There's one there by the, the card shack.
Yeah, there's just a pole in between two trees. It's on, it's got a little concrete base, and then there's a flag pole just sticking up between the two trees. But it, the flag pole is on top of the windmill. The flag is on top of the windmill, so the flag pole is just in the park.
And it's in bad shape, the pole, pole is?
Cause we looked at replacing it to fix it up, to put the flag back on it, but it's.
Okay.
Just, if you want some of that stuff cut off during the process, is what I'm asking.
Okay.
I like aesthetics.
Yeah.
Need a motion for them to, to okay that?
And you'll probably, if I get the grant, if we get the grant, you'll probably hear me scream for joy, so you won't need to. We haven't had enough luck lately. We've been getting a lot of turned down notes, so if we get it, we'll be very happy.
And when, what is that?
It will look on mid-April.
Mid-April, okay.
Anything in there, Sharon, second?
Aye, aye.
Sarah, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you for always looking out for Pawhatan when it comes to these grants and stuff.
Well, thank you for letting me do it.
And praise the Lord.
We're just gonna do two horseshoe pits then, and there's three. And we're cement? Pieces of cement are on each side. That come out too, is that?
Well, I think what we can do is keep the posts, uh, shaved down with like a bobcat or something to where, where it's all kind of grown in and kind of, and then I requested some wood, two by fours, to where we could have sort of a backstop to it. But I think the, the horseshoe posts are fine.
The ones, the two that you're gonna keep, but the other, the other one, you want the cement and everything gone.
Well, what, what do you think? There's two things in between the trees. And that'd make a nice little, you know, two tournament thing. And then there, there's a third one that's just out, kind of an outlier. But I never saw a fourth one, so I don't know.
I think there's just three.
Yeah, so I didn't know if one, we only got money, if we get it, we're only gonna get money to fix the two of them. So I don't know about the third one. And I don't, do people play horseshoes?
Are you gonna put sand in the block?
There's ten, yeah, play sand that we pound ten, or I don't have, have fifty bags of it, so.
I know that they still have horseshoe tournaments around.
They used to have with the Horton, or the Pawhatan Fall Festival every year, they had a horseshoe tournament.
Still have a set of horseshoes.
I do, I have like two bets.
So we obviously get two, by Memorial Day weekend and then the Fall Fest, and we ready.
Mine are, mine are steep.
By mid-April, we should know whether we got accepted or not. It's, it was competitive. They only had a hundred thousand, so only ten pounds.
Or like nineteen.
Gonna get it, so it might.